Are we ready?
We are.
Okay, all right. Good evening, everybody. Calling to order the Clark County Clean Water Commission Fall Special Meeting. Today is October 5th, 2022. And we'll begin with roll call. Brendan Addis, who I believe is going to be absent. Yes, Alice?
Correct.
Okay, absent. I am Matt Jones, present. Michelle Gertz?
Present.
Roger Hague?
Roger is supposed to be here in person, so hopefully he will be here soon.
Okay, proceeding. Jeff Cassen- is it Cassennett, yeah?
Kesnick.
Kes- okay. Kesnick, thank you. Sorry. Marie Lamanna?
I have not heard from her.
Okay. Sandra Martin-Bone, who's supposed to be absent as well. Confirmed, okay.
Correct.
Josh Seeds?
Yep, on the line.
Okay, well, a little faint, but we're counting that as a present. And Robert Trust?
Present.
Great, okay. Alice, any public comment submitted?
No public comment as of 6:00 PM today.
Okay, great, all right. Moving on to our next item on the agenda. Presentation from the Lower Columbia Estuary Partnership. Today we have with us Chris Hathaway. Thank you so much for joining us, Chris. What was yours? I don't know how, I guess Alice, you had this solved already, so.
Yeah.
Do you need anything?
Thank you, everybody.
Just one second. Let me make sure.
Our phone line can see it?
That is theoretically what is going to happen. There we go. Have to put one more button to push.
All right, great.
Okay. Are you gonna see that? Okay, all right.
I'll use point and I'll-
Okay, I got a lot of signs. That was fast talking. Is this, where should I stand? Is this work or how?
There.
I guess I can, it works for us. But what about online? Can Michelle and Josh, can you guys hear okay, Chris?
I can hear fine.
Great, all right. I think that's-
I can hear fine.
Well, hey, really appreciate- Good, good. I appreciate the invitation to be here today. I'm Chris Hathaway. I'm the Community Programs Director for the Lower Columbia Estuary Partnership. And I've been around for quite a while there. I've never presented to this particular commission, so it's kind of cool. And definitely happy to be here. I'd like to obviously acknowledge Matt, who's the new Chair of the Estuary Partnership Board. Thank you, Matt, for being here. Actually, I don't know if we ever met yet.
For the acknowledgement, yeah.
My boss is boss, so my ultimate boss over here. No pressure. Yeah, but great to have you and on the board. I imagine Matt knows a lot about us now as the Estuary Partnership, but Jeff and Robert and other folks, I don't know if you guys have heard much about us over the years. I thought I might just do some quick introductions.
I've planted with your organization many times.
Okay, great. Good, good, good. I'll just hit some like real quick highlights as I move through. Obviously, we were founded in 1995. We're a national estuary program, so there's 28 of those around the country. It's a program that is administered by EPA, so we get a bit of EPA money each year. We have a management plan for the Lower Columbia River that was finished in 1999 that included a ton of stakeholder outreach. And since then, we've been implementing that plan.
One question. Michelle, can you see the slideshow?
I can, just fine, thank you.
Perfect, I just wanted to make sure.
What if I go like this? Would that be a change?
Well, no, just I wanted to make sure, because I only see three spots. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was getting to see it. Okay.
We are a bi-state organization, so Oregon to Washington, from Bonneville Dam to the ocean. We're a nonprofit, like I said, a national estuary program. We have a staff of kind of 25 to 30, depending on the season, more in the summer as we hired some seasonal, then we have a science team, a community programs team, and kind of the admin executive teams. We do, the science team does all sorts of stuff, large-scale habitat restoration projects, ecosystem monitoring, project effectiveness monitoring, GS and data management, toxic production, and climate change stuff. Our community programs team also does, has done a ton of stuff, and Jeff does probably be planted with. We do classroom lessons, field trips, planting projects for volunteers and students. We do on-water trips in these 29-foot big canoes that folks may have seen. We do stormwater retrofit projects, and we also coordinate the Lower Columbia River Water Trail. The admin side of things kind of holds it all together, obviously. Does the bookkeeping and invoicing and billing and supporting and guiding and leadership. In Clark County, we've done a ton of work. It's amazing how much of our work over the years has taken place in Clark County. And I think there's a bunch of reasons for that, right? One, it's just the geography. There's a lot of like urban streams in Clark County that haven't been buried. So that's open opportunity areas. You have a giant area where includes things like the East Fort Worth River and Camping Creek and Gibbons Creek and Steigerwald are just outside of it. Great partners. We have amazing partnerships with Clark County and the city of Vancouver, a whole host of other folks, folks on the East Fort Worth River, Port of Vancouver. All of that really leads up to projects, right? You have, and you have funding. Washington has more funding available than Oregon. Through the Department of Ecology, there's more money for stormwater, there's more money for 319 projects. The Clark County Clean Water Restoration Fund that the LCFRB managed for five or six years, that was a great funding source for our program. We got funded every single time, and we got funding twice one year. So a lot of things have come together for us to do a ton. I mean, just literally probably like 70% of the work we do organizationally has taken place in Clark County. So I'm just gonna kind of go through some of the projects that we've done recently, from the community program side, the side that I'm involved with, and then the science program side. If it gets too much overwhelming, just let me know and I'll skip ahead. Some of it will kind of be the same, because a lot of our projects kind of follow the same model. But we'll start at Salmon Creek, where we've been working since 2014. With multiple different funding sources, different funding sources from ecology and funding from the LCFRB, Clark County Clean Water Racer. That is a mouthful. I can usually say it pretty good, but anyway, we had an agreement with Clark County in 2014 to start work on 12 acres. We were like, hey, we want to do some work, and we think there's some funding sources. And Pat Lee with Legacy Rams at times was like, okay, you can have this area. You know, this can be your 12 acres to work in. And at the time, we didn't know how it was going to work out, but we've been able to get funding for 12 acres. We have another seven acres right now that we're doing site prep on, and we're putting together a grant for another two acres. So we're pretty much, we're going to be in the 20-acre area for this project site. And it hasn't been without challenges. There's lots of different things out there. It's a tough site. So we've, out there, we've done all kinds of stuff. Every one of our projects has had student engagement, so that includes classroom lessons and field trips, and volunteer plant teams, site prep from contractors and as well as Estuary Partnership staff. So it's kind of been a whole, a whole project out there. Like I mentioned, it's kind of a challenging site, like a lot of places are around here, and especially think of like the last eight years, right? In terms of heat domes and droughts and high flows and low flows. But we're working through it, and we're having pretty good success at getting riparian restoration along this Salmon Creek Greenway site. Burnt Bridge Creek, so I'm going to cover all the watersheds almost that you guys have on the commission. At Burnt Bridge Creek, a lot of the same site type of work, student education, student planting, and volunteer planting. At Meadow Brook North, we have restored about five and a half acres along Burnt Bridge Creek over kind of a four-year period, engaged hundreds of students and volunteers, two different funding sources, and a really great partnership with the city of Vancouver, who's done all the site prep. They have a really unique kind of planting strategy, where they put like a 12-inch layer of mulch on us, they spray it, and then they'll put a 12-inch layer of mulch on it to kind of keep the weeds down. And then we end up just almost planting directly in the mulch, which at the time we were like, is this really going to work? But turns out, they have really great success with that method. And it's huge, because they're bringing the mulch, they're spreading the mulch, they're doing the spraying. So they've been a really great partnership for us. And then they also have the ability, which is huge in our climate, to be able to water the plants in the summer. So at a lot of our, at our city of Vancouver sites, they're able to bring in a water truck and spray plants, you know, a couple times a summer, but that can make a big difference in terms of plant survival. So that was one site along, at Meadow Brook North, kind of up watershed. And now we're working along the Alki Road area, so from Alki Road kind of down to the mouth of Vancouver Lake. Currently, we have funding to, we've either completed or in process of about nine acres of riparian planting in that stretch, using the same sort of model with the city of Vancouver. Funding from the Clean Water Restoration Fund and from ecology, two different ecology, two different LCFRB pots of money and one ecology money, and now a second ecology money. Again, the city of Vancouver is doing a lot of the work. You can see this, this kind of shows the areas that we've been working in. Area one was ecology, areas two A and two B were LCFRB, and area three is LCFRB. What we did last year, and now we're just starting this project, is we're using our area number three, LCFRB funding for ecology 319 grant. So it's matching our 319 grant. And a 319 grant, if you want to go to the next site, Alice?
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with a 319.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. The 319 is a, so ecology has what they call a combined water quality funding list or something like that. And they have, within that yearly offering of grants, they have five different types of grants. And the 319 grant is one of them. And it funds, it comes from EPA, from the federal government, and it goes, each state gets this money to distribute out for non-point source projects. You can use it for lots of different things, including riparian restoration, and in our case, stormwater education. So the federal, it's passed through from EPA to each state, each state then has their own rules about the priorities about how they distribute. Washington gets probably, I don't know, 10 times as much as Oregon for a lot of reasons that I don't fully remember, and I probably can't explain very well, but that's, it's a cool reality for people working in Washington. So with this new funding source, we're looking at this whole lower floodplain, so you can, this is a gunshot kind of looking down Burnt Bridge Creek to Vancouver Lake. And what we're going to do is take a more holistic look at this floodplain and kind of bring in the science side of our organization and see if there's things that we can do within the creek to reconnect it with its floodplain more, or create more of a sponge for the creek before it gets into Vancouver Lake to uptake pollutants, and to establish kind of where plants would do best, what kind of plants would do best, and kind of do this, you know, some hard science about how we can approach this lower 40 acres versus two-acre planting, two-acre planting, two-acre planting, two-acre planting. So we're trying to do a more kind of holistic scientific look at that lower 40 acres of Burnt Bridge Creek, and we'll do that over the next year or so with money from ecology.
Yeah, yeah. Are you prioritizing at all with water quality parameters that are available for you?
We will, yeah. So I mean, part of it, one of the reasons that it got funded, and one of the reasons that it's so timely, is the Burnt Bridge Creek team deal that's going to be coming out. And so we'll definitely be coordinating with ecology to try to figure out like, in terms of, and project partners like the city of Vancouver and the folks who are involved with Vancouver Lake, to figure out what, you know, what can we best do to try to improve the water quality of Burnt Bridge Creek, especially before it gets to Vancouver Lake, where it's the very end of the watershed, right? So there's not a, a lot of the water already coming down is the water that it is, but if we can get it out on the floodplain more, maybe we can help improve the very minimal flow, quite frankly, that Burnt Bridge Creek is capable of producing in Vancouver Lake. That help at all.
Yeah, more later.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's the standard stuff, temperatures, dissolved oxygen, phosphorus, nutrients. But yeah. Another site that we've been working on for a long time is Vancouver Lake. So Estuary Partnership has been involved in the Vancouver Lake partnership that was formed and kind of focused on Vancouver Lake for a decade or so in the early 2000s. In 2015, as that kind of ended, the Port of Vancouver, Clark County, and city of Vancouver were kind of looking for like what's next, and we pitched an idea to them that they were receptive to, to kind of, to get people out on the lake. They had some leftover money at the time. And we were all like, well, let's just try this. Let's get people out on the lake and just focus on building stewardship for the lake and engagement in the lake. And what's been great is that the city and the county and the port have been really happy with that project over the years, and they continue to fund us to do that. So over the years, we've taken, you know, hundreds of students and hundreds of dozens and dozens of classes, and engaged lots and lots of volunteers out on Vancouver Lake in lots of different ways. We've done, each year, we provide classroom lessons to about 10 classes. We've done Vancouver Lake field trips, on-water trips in our big canoes, family nature hikes, and then we also kind of help communicate with that Vancouver Lake. Jumping out to Battleground, again, is a very similar project. It's like we found a successful model, right? And we're kind of working that across different watersheds. So again, here, we had two different funding sources, Clark County Clean Water Restoration Fund and Ecology 319. We worked at Brookhaven Park and Hidden Glen Park, and in each case, we planted about 4,000 trees and shrubs, engaged hundreds of Battleground students, provided classroom lessons that focused on clean water and stormwater, and engaged community volunteers in the planting projects. Skip ahead to Camping Creek. So this is a site that we're working in right now, like currently. Little bit of a backstory here, so we received a Lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board grant to do a similar project here in Camping Creek, again, student education. And the way that, the reason we keep doing this is it works, and teachers love it, and students love it, and we're able to have successful revegetation projects. So it's kind of, you know, it kind of seems a bit much when you say it, same thing again after again after again, in different watershed after different watershed. But I think the reason that we've been able to do it, we've been able to get funding for it, is because it works, and it's been successful, and the students and the teachers and the community really appreciate it. In Camping Creek, we're going to do the same project, basically, three acres riparian restoration. We've since put that project on hold as our science team has looked at that larger Camping Creek floodplain that flows through Mabel Court Park in Washego. Now, our science team has said, hey, we kind of think this is important too. So we paused our project, as they're now doing an investigation into Camping Creek and that reach, to see if they can do something more substantial that would improve creek health and lessen high-flow volumes that flow into Gibbons Creek, which flows into Steigerwald. So the reason that we're working up here in the park, and the reason we started working here four years ago at Camping Creek, when we first started our project, was we knew that we were going to have this huge project at Steigerwald Lake National Wildlife Refuge, right? Spending all this money to reconnect the refuge to the Columbia River, and to reconnect Gibbons Creek to the floodplain, and did a lot of other stuff too, obviously. But it seems pretty important, when you're spending all that money, that the water that's coming into the refuge is the best water it can be, right? So that was the impetus for us to work upstream at the community program side, and that was and continued to be the impetus for the science team to work upstream too. We're also working in that same upstream mode in, at the Washego High School area. So right now, kind of frantically writing a grant to ecology to fund a design project here at Washego High School and in the surrounding streets that would design stormwater retrofit projects to treat about nine acres of impervious surface for both flow ideally and for water quality. Currently, that's the largest area of impervious surface in the Camping Creek watershed, the high school parking lot. There's no, there's no stormwater management at all. We can, the way, some projects are easy, some projects are hard. This is a relatively easy project in the high school, because we can, we can, we think we can put stormwater retrofit facilities in this parking lot without losing a single parking space, which is kind of a miracle. And then there's some really great opportunities on the streets nearby. So that's a project that we're currently working on, that has a very direct connection to clean water and to Camping Creek, Gibbons Creek, and Steigerwald. Here, we'll talk about that a little bit more in a couple weeks. We also do kind of just straight-up education grants when we can, so this is not the same model, but kind of cool for us, the state of Washington in early August, I think, released a brand-new grant program that nobody had heard of called the Outdoor Learning Grant, with a decent amount of money, and a, basically a 30-day application window, which is quite tight for these sorts of projects. We were able to put a grant together very quickly, working with a lot of really established school partnerships that we have. And we heard, I think last week, that we got funded for $138,000 to do watershed education, storm, or field trips of lots of different types, and to engage kids in all this work. But you guys are obviously are passionate and care about, because you're here on a Wednesday night, sitting in a meeting room, listening to me. Science team, I'm going to just kind of fly through their work a little bit, just because I'm getting on here, and I'm not directly involved in that side of the organization anymore, but hopefully everybody's heard of, the projects I'm going to talk about are Steigerwald, East Fort Worth River, Camping Creek, which I've kind of already talked about and then monitoring. So hopefully, everybody's heard of the Steigerwald project. If folks have a chance to be there yet, since it's reopened, yeah, it's pretty cool. Obviously, the largest restoration project in the Lower Columbia River history. 120 new acres of, 120 acres of new wetlands, they planted more than half a million trees and shrubs, reconnected 965 acres of floodplain, reconnected Gibbons Creek to its floodplain, raised Highway 14, built new setback levees. I mean, it's a huge, huge project. I mean, we're in probably, from the time we started working on that project, it was probably, I guess, seven years ago to where we are now, when we're almost kind of done. So huge accomplishment for our science team, huge project, and really great project that had, obviously, a ton of really important partners, who you can't do a project like that by yourself as one small nonprofit organization. So we have, you know, just countless folks who helped us along the way, including ecology and DPA and US Fish and Wildlife Service, and National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, Columbia Gorge, kind of the-
If you look at the traffic, if you look at the traffic on the refuge, or on the Steigerwald, everybody's appreciating it.
That's good.
I live there, I live in Washego.
Nice, nice. Good to hear, Roger.
Yeah.
Cool. Yeah, I think, I mean, the trails are, there's more trails, trails are kind of more interesting. I mean, it's just going to get better and better too, as things mature. East Fort Worth River, who's here representing East Fort Worth River?
That's me, man.
That'd be, so you probably already know about this, but we've been working on East Fort Worth River projects for probably six or seven years, but some really great stuff has happened in the last few weeks, where a lot of the work that our science team has put in out there is starting to pay off in terms of grant funding. So let's see. Mason Creek, we just got a basically $200,000 grant to work on Mason Creek, which is the tributary to the East Fort Worth River, to do final restoration designs, to improve off-channel habitat connectivity, improve habitat quality and quantity, improve thermal refuge areas, provide more access to cold water. So that's pretty exciting.
Am I off?
No, no, I think I skipped. Yeah, maybe to go backwards. I think I actually left a couple things out here. Anyway, we got like, we're doing a crap ton of work on the East Fort Worth River, and just last week, we got basically, so a $7 million grant for the Ridgefield Pits project, and basically like $200,000 grant for Mason Creek, another $200,000 grant for another tributary to the East Fort Worth River, and then I think another $200,000 grant to do a fish passage barrier in all of Southwest Washington. So you guys have all heard how problematic the culverts are, and there's been a lot of press and stuff about that in the last few years, and so this will be a really important barrier assessment that will result in kind of a prioritized list of important culverts to replace in Southwest Washington. So a lot of this East Fort Worth River work is going to roll out in the next few years, you know, where stuff will start happening on the ground. And again, it just takes a long time to develop these projects, to find the funding, you've got to find funding multiple times, you know, for the planning, the design, and the construction. So all this kind of starting to come to fruition here in the East Fork, and the Ridgefield Pits project is going to be kind of another Steigerwald, maybe not quite as public or quite as cool, but very impactful for that particular river system. Could have not enough. Next one else. Mason Creek, I pretty much already talked about Camping Creek. A lot of it is, again, like I said, is kind of making that connection and working upstream from Steigerwald to improve water quality. And I think the next one is fish passage barrier, so this is just what we're doing with that fish passage barrier assessment that I just mentioned. And then, I don't mean to not spend much time on this, but in part, because we don't do that much monitoring in Clark County, but we do have a fairly extensive monitoring program. Have three or four staff, full-time staff, who kind of run that program, and they do monitoring up and down the Columbia River in Oregon and Washington for action effectiveness, so see how well restoration projects are performing. Straight-up ecosystem monitoring, it's kind of status and trends, it's the only monitoring like that that takes place in the Columbia River, basically. DPA pays for that. And then-
Didn't they do, Chris, didn't they do some monitoring on the East Fork for temperature last year?
Probably, yeah, yeah.
Noting it was quite high.
Yeah.
Unhealthy for salmon.
Yeah, so I think a lot of times, we try to get them out to our restoration sites, you know, in the planning phase, so we can kind of document pre-conditions. So they're doing a lot of monitoring work at Steigerwald, and then some of the sites that they work out are like Campbell Slough and Ridgefield, Franz Lake, which is kind of, I think, ours in Clark County. But, you know, sites in Owaco and sites kind of along the area, so a lot of great work that they do. I think that's-
Do you have any plans for attacking Lackommiss Watershed?
Not right now, for sure.
It's in deep need of help.
We've, a long time ago, we did a little bit of work out there, but yeah, I could see that being- could see that being, being another focus area for us at some point.
It's, I mean, we've been collecting water quality data on it for two years. He isn't second in it right now. And they just got finished with a year of, Jeff Novak has got, his ones got through with a year of monitoring on Seven of the Creek.
Oh, wow.
And so the, the data sits there ready to have you take a look at it and, and put together some restoration process because if you look upstream from, from Lackamas, there's roots of problems.
There's what?
Problems in the lake too. But up, up seeing from Lackamas Lake, there's, there's real, there's real water quality problems. And it would be very nice to throw a few fun into that, into that pit. It's not good.
Yes, yeah, I mean, again, that's, that's one of the amazing things about Clark County is there's so many streams that are available, these are my streams, smaller mainstreams that, you know, I think what's happening now, what's starting to happen is like some of these streams, like Salmon Creek and Burnbridge Creek and Campen Creek and Lackamas Creek are going to start rising a little bit higher in the priority level because a lot of the other kind of main stem work and lower hanging fruit has, has been done. You know, obviously there's a ton more priority in these works and lots of work elsewhere. But I think what's going to happen over time, some of these smaller, smaller basins are actually going to kind of increase in importance and people are going to understand their importance a little bit more and, and, you know, if we're going to do a good job of restoring our, our Columbia River and all of our large, that smaller creeks are, are important drivers of that, that water quality, that ecosystem. Can't promise you, Roger, that we'll be up there next week, but, but we'll probably get there.
The Lackamas Watershed Council would welcome you and open arms.
Actually, I haven't been there for so long. I've cut it down to go. Maybe I need to make a little field trip. Run the waterski.
Try on our bacteria and eat you alive.
Yeah, just don't touch the water.
Yeah. That's, that's where our problem sits.
Yeah.
That's kind of the end of my, my presentation. If you have any other questions or comments or thoughts.
Can you describe the, the, your jurisdiction, what Lower Columbia refers to?
Yeah, totally. So it's, on the river, it's easy, bottom of the damn promotion. How far away you go from the river is a little bit more morphous. But generally, it definitely includes all the tidal areas, but it's actually quite much, it's a lot broader than that, Eric. It's like, we have a map in our CCMP and that's kind of how we define it. The map was drawn a really, really long time ago and I think it was drawn to give us a lot of geography to work with and in a lot of different counties. And so we can work in Washington County, in Oregon, in Lackamas County, and then obviously anywhere in Clark County, some in Skamania County, some in Powhatles, some in Pacific. So yeah, really, really big geography. I, I'm doing another large project, smaller project in Owaco, so we cover a lot, a lot of that.
What about with the pandemic, when that hit and how you had to change all of your educational outreach and the pivot that you had to do and how that affected your training with, with the educational outreach?
Yeah.
Just have a big, just.
There was a thing, there was a thing, wasn't there?
I, I heard there was a rumor of that.
Yeah, man, that was tough. That was, I mean, for a program that, that is really focused on working with kids in schools, that was, that was really, really hard for us and required a lot of like quick thinking and adaptability. And, you know, when, when it first hit, for the first couple of months, when nobody, you know, nobody did anything, we were like, you know, kind of shut down. But we quickly kind of realized it's probably going to go on and we need to like pivot as much as we can and, and reach kids where they were at the time, which was, you know, online and at home. And as sucky as that was, you know, we were, our team was able to do, I think, a really good job of coming up with, with take-home kits and like kind of interactive things that they could do online. And, you know, once kids were back in school masks, we started doing outside lessons that we normally do in the classroom. So we have like a fish dissection class and we adopt kids outside undercover playground doing fish dissection on tables like, like that one over there. So basically, and, and working with our funders too was really important. It's like, I can't say enough about like Clark County and the Port of Vancouver and the city of Vancouver and people like Lackamas County Watershed Environmental Services. It's like, people are quite understanding, which made it, made it really, I mean, it just, it motivated us to do, I think, a really good job and try to be as focused on certain kids and kind of meeting it while at the same time meeting our contract obligations.
Great, thanks, Chris. Any, any other questions? If you haven't already, I encourage everybody to just scroll through Lower Columbia Story Project's website. It's just, just a quick, they do a whole bunch of stuff.
Yeah.
Very busy organization, yeah.
This is why we're doing Clark County.
Yeah. So thank you, Chris, for coming in. We really appreciate it. You're more than welcome to stick around, but I imagine there are other things on here as well, so we won't take offense if you want to.
Yeah, yeah.
Either, but we really appreciate it. Thank you, Chris.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Right, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is Eric's EnviroScape demonstration. So Eric, I'm not sure quite what that will be, so you have the Florida to, to do what you're going to do.
Okay.
Just direct us what, like us.
All right. Well, before I start, I mean, I got to plug these LST big canoes. Get the chance to go on a canoe trip, definitely take it up, take them up on it. They're awesome. They're huge and they're great for the kids and I love the way that they really get people involved and connected to their waterways, which as we know through research is one of the key factors in inspiring stewardship of our waterways. So it might just seem like you're going out to play in the river, but that's really important. And so, and so this is also kind of important, a little bit of, of a way to try to bring all that watershed bar. You know, it's an area of land that drains to a common body of water defined by ridges. And it can be said in a sentence, but it's kind of a difficult concept to grasp, especially for, especially for students, when you're trying to, you know, describe it. And usually when I, when I start this EnviroScape demonstration, I talk a little bit about what a watershed is and I actually like to do a little demonstration like this where I have the students crumple up a piece of paper and not, not like too much, but, and you kind of open it up a little bit. And I say, okay, now look at that and hold that in your hand. I, I would have passed out some markers. And I'll say, well, okay, so find a low spot and that's your stream. And then I want you to use your, your marker to draw a line around the ridges that show where all the water that would drain to that stream. And by the end of it, you have then, kind of have like a, a mini watershed in your hand on a piece of paper. And that starts to really click. Oh, okay, now, now when we were talking about those ridges, all the water drains down into that stream, into that lake, into that river, that's what a watershed is. And so, so that's what I kind of start off with. And then I have this set up, sometimes when I'm with a bunch of students, depending on the amount of time I have, I might have them help me set this up and hey, this is like a community that kind of looks like your community. You've got a, a neighborhood here with gigantic dogs, you know, and huge cars. You've got, you know, there's an area up on the mountain in the hills where there's some trees, maybe there's some logging that happened and so there's some, you know, forests that have been cut down. This is a wastewater treatment plant out there where all the stuff that you flush down the toilet and go down the sink goes to get treated. You've got a factory over here. You've got a farm with some animals and a field. You got cows, you got horses, you know, you've got cars and, and vehicles driving on the street and you've got some streams, you have some bridges going over those streams and, you know, you have a lake, we'll call this area a lake with some fish or at least one fish that is, that's there. And so really this is, this is your community, this is your watershed. But we're going to talk today about what goes into a watershed and what happens when it rains and how sometimes, depending on where we are and, and how we do the things that we do in everyday life, those actions can have impact on our water quality, the places that we love to swim and fish and enjoy the water. And so I'll, I'll talk real quick about some of these, these may look, you know, it's kind of tough to switch back and forth between, you know, adults and kids. Go, I start talking to you a little bit like, like a child, don't be offended, please. It's, it's just, it's just kind of, kind of who I am too. These may look like sprinkles, but these are not sprinkles. Okay, these are definitely not sprinkles. You see right here, this is animal waste here. And this, well, these are, these are grass clippings. Again, these might look like sprinkles, but I assure you they are not. These are trash and debris right here. This, well, this is, this is dirt. All the kids want to smell this. Again, looks like sprinkles. Let me assure you, this is soap and, and cleaners. And finally, we have chemicals. Oh, not finally, but we have one more. This is oil. And so let's just kind of go around and we'll just kind of talk about some of the things that are in our community and different ways that maybe some pollution gets in the ground. Right now, this is like, you know, perfect time. It hasn't rained in a number of, well, a number of days anyway. We did have some, our first flush last, last week or April first flush. But, you know, in the summertime, this is kind of like how things are going to go down. So I'll start off, say, okay, well, here's a factory. What kind of things might, might, what kind of pollutants might come outside or be around on a factory? What do you guys think? Chemicals? Maybe, maybe chemicals. We've got smokestack, maybe there's some spills outside in this, in this driveway. So, you know, and this is the interactive part, I'd have the kids come up and, you know, do some sprinkles on here and they can really go at it. You know, maybe I see a parking lot here. Sometimes in, in a parking lot, you may see this before. Next time you go to a parking lot, I want you to look in the parking space where there's not a car and you'll see where, where the car engine usually is. Look on that piece of, of that pavement there and you'll see some black spots. Sometimes the pavement looks like it's been, you know, rotted a little bit there or degraded in some way. What that actually is, is that's oil. When, when cars leak oil when they're parked, you know, that goes on the, on the, on the, parking spaces and, and it goes to a place that can, can kind of stick there for a little bit. And then I think that's what we've got for, for the factory. Now, I've got, I've got a farm here with a lot of animals. What do you think type of pollutant might be animal to make? Again.
What you're holding.
Yeah, what I'm holding, not chocolate sprinkles. It's, it's pet waste or animal waste. And again, you know, a cow and, and a horse, you know, we're talking, you know, dozens of pounds a day from, from these animals and it can really add up. And so, you know, I'm going to sprinkle this around because, you know, this is what animals do, the farm. But it's not just farm animals. You see this gigantic dog here that's the size of a house, things are not to scale, you know, that's also pet waste, isn't it? And, and I think the average home, you know, almost every home in Clark County has a dog. When you average it out, it's close to, it's close to one dog per, per household and not everybody picks up, unfortunately. I know all of you at home do, but some people don't. And so this dog, you know, gigantic dog, fortunately, those, that dog owner does not pick up after their dog. So that's another thing that's, you know, out in the ground. Go back to this, this house here, this forest here, you know, this field here. I see a lot of green space, but I see some brown space here too. And the brown space represents, you know, exposed soil. And so I'm going to use this, this dirt here and sprinkle some of that around where I see some exposed or bare soil. This can happen when trees are cut down for, for logging purposes and before things have been replanted. This can happen at construction sites where they're building new homes sometimes. And mind you, you know, all of these people are supposed to be, in these industries, are supposed to be controlling this dirt that's going to be exposed, otherwise known as sediment. And so I've, I've included some of that on some of those bare, bare soil areas. And I've also got these soaps and cleaners. Now where, where might we find the soaps and cleaners? Well, you know, this, this family here.
Washing their car.
Yeah, they're washing their car and they're not taking it to the car wash and they're not even washing it on the grass, which is the next best spot. What they're actually doing is they're washing that car right on the street or their driveway. It doesn't really matter. Any hard surface where you wash that car. As you can see, there's soap now all over that street. We also have some trash and debris and this is something especially for students might be familiar with. It's something that they, they connect with a lot because they see a lot. Hopefully they're not the ones seeing it, but it's something that I've noticed that students really pick up on, trash and, and litter. And so, you know, it can be in neighborhoods. You'll probably see that type of stuff along streets. Definitely along streets. I mean, it can be really anywhere people, people seem to litter almost wherever they are, you can, you can find it. In this neighborhood, and this is kind of an interesting one. We've got these things, they're called, you know, grass clippings. Grass clippings, pollutant? It seems kind of natural, doesn't it? Well, I mean, it's kind of natural. Like it can, it can decompose, but, you know, when, if you had a bunch of people that were, you know, mowing their lawn and just dumping all that stuff kind of into the street, they might be thinking, oh, well, you know what? Like next time it rains, it's going to go down the storm drain. Not my problem, right? Natural. Well, truth be told, when a bunch of that does go down the storm drain, that does become a pollutant when that, when these grass clippings go down the storm drain, they don't just go to the storm drain, they can carry on to your local stream or lake or river where they decompose and they can cause problems by adding nutrients by, when the decomposition process, they can consume oxygen in the water that's needed by fish. So there can be a bunch of other problems related to that as well. I got the, well, I already said soaps and cleaners and this is a point I always like to make because this is very, the people that make soaps and cleaners, their job is to sell soaps and cleaners. And they kind of know that, you know, soaps and cleaners shouldn't really be, you know, used, you know, shouldn't be throwing the soaps and cleaners into the stream in the river. And they also know that people care about safe and healthy things. So you, often you will see soaps and cleaners that say biodegradable, natural soap. But I can assure you that no fish wants to swim in soapy water. So even though it may be biodegradable and a little bit better than some other type of soap, it's still not a soap that should be mixed with water that goes into our streams. That's a good thing to, to remember. You know, and also we may even be able to contribute a little bit of soaps maybe to this wastewater treatment plant too, because, you know, they're, they're cleaning up stuff a lot there and who knows what type of little acid. Maybe even on the farm too. I'm sure they're cleaning up some stuff here and there. So yeah, you got to think, you know, a lot of these things can be in more than one place. In additional, in addition, you know, the chemicals, chemicals, you know, there's a lot of chemicals that, that even might not be outside, but might go down the, your sink in your home that may, may be able to bypass the wastewater treatment plant. So there could be chemicals that even get past this wastewater treatment plant, which generally removes a lot of the, a lot of many pollutants from our, our indoor tap water or toilet water. or toilet water, uh, sink water, but that goes eventually in back into the stream after it passes the wastewater treatment plant. Now, uh, oil is not only on the parking lot for this, uh, for this factory here. You see, there are, you know, hundreds of thousands of cars that drive through our community, you know, every week, every, every year. And, you know, many of them do leak oil if they're not being maintained properly. And, uh, and so, you know, not only will you see some oil leaks in the parking lot next time you go, you may also see them in, uh, just along the road as cars are driving, dripping and driving. And so here we have this, this community. The water still looks pretty good, but I assure you that's just because it hasn't rained yet. And so, well, what's that? I hear the weather forecast is coming up and, you know, here we come. Fall is coming and we know it's coming with fall. Is that the spring rain? And so, or the fall rains? And so this is a really important time. Let's pretend like this is kind of, you know, the end of summer after all this stuff's kind of gotten out here. It's like, yeah, well, it's not really polluting the water so much yet. This would be a really key time to be cleaning up as much as you can. We like to clean up before the first flush, before, when, after all this stuff is accumulated on the road, um, on the hard surfaces, especially the parking lots, the driveways, the, the streets, but also in the yards and wherever else. It's so important to clean up before the first flush because this is the, the opportunity when you're cleaning up can have the most impact, um, in a positive way on, on your watershed. And we're also going to see about this being a watershed because we're going to notice that all of this water, and we're going to want you to pay attention and find out where it drains. And so this is kind of the fun part. Oh yeah, it's, uh, it's starting to rain a little bit and it's getting to rain a little bit harder. And oh boy, a big storm is coming in. It's going to get really wet here, a real gully washer, as my old boss used to call it. And look at what's happening. Start to get all this rain here and I'm starting to see some things starting to move through the watershed. Some things are starting to move down the road. They're going into, uh, into the streams. And all that water, which is now not the clear water that's actually coming out of this water bottle or the clear water that's coming out of the clouds and falling onto the, uh, surfaces of our community. Now this water is actually looking a little bit different. I see this, it's got some red in it from the chemicals. I see that it's got some brown in it from the, uh, from the sediment that's running off of these bare soil areas. I see that, I see some of this, uh, this litter moving as well and some of the grass is moving into there. And so this is where I'd really, you know, use the help of a bunch of really excited kids to be spraying the heck out of this thing. Which I'm not going all the way that far. But then you start to look, you start to notice that the pollutants that were just in your backyard or in a parking lot or on a farm have now picked up, have been picked up by the rainwater or the storm water and been carried into this lake. Right now the fish is not happy because if you have a look at this lake, you'll notice a color of water, it's not the kind of water that you might swim in. And this is what happens in real life in a watershed. Pollutants that we do in our everyday act, activities can collect outside. And when that happens, if they're not cleaned up properly, then they can get picked up in the storm water and carried to our local streams where they're very difficult to remove. And so at this point, I usually start to go into a, well, what, what can we do? Talk, right? So instead of dumping your leaves or your grass clippings down the street, what could you do? Compost it. That's great. Put it in your yard bin or compost it in your backyard. Or just leave the grass clippings right on your glass, uh, right on your grass or a slow release fertilizer. How about litter? Of course. Recycle it, throw it in the trash. What about the pet waste? Pick it up and throw it in the trash. Yes, bag it first before you throw it in the trash, but do that. Don't compost the pet waste at home or in your green yard bin. Animal waste at a farm can be composted. It can be used back on the field. What about, uh, this dirt on this, on this bare soil? You could put down grass, you could plant other plants to capture that. You could have, um, an erosion control plant to control that sediment. Oil, you can get that car fixed. Make sure you're practicing good maintenance with your vehicles. Uh, for, for chemicals, you know, chemicals can, can both, you know, be, uh, come from our homes and the products we use. We can use safer products that have fewer and less chemicals or less harmful chemicals. For soaps and cleaners, if you're washing your car, where is a better place to wash your car? That's right, a car wash. Or if you can't go to the car wash on the grass at your home, if you don't have room for that, you can always roll up an old towel and put it at the end of the driveway, protect your storm drain for it to capture that dirty wash water before it runs off into the storm drain and into your stream. Because all of our storm drains run to our streams and they don't get treated. And so this is the, this is the watershed model, the EnviroScape. And, uh, this is what I like to demonstrate with kids. And I'll take it around to a few different events, community events that we do once in a while. We lend it out to schools. I just had a school borrow it last week. And so, uh, this is the second time we've used it maybe since COVID. So I'm glad it's back out again. And the kids have a blast, uh, being a part of it. Typically I would, you know, paint a picture here, there's, you know, a classroom and like everybody is like around me. Everybody is here. And it's so much fun.
What, what grade level do you use?
You know, we use this from like elementary school. I mean, honestly, this can go up to adults. It's all about how you present it, but I find, I mean, I love to be real, like the elementary school kids, they're just, they're so excited and I don't know. And so I think they get so much out of it. They, they just have all the energy and they want to be a part of it. And I think that really helps them in, in getting it too. But, um, but yeah, we've used it, uh, for all ages. So do I have any questions about this watershed or about what you can do for, for your watershed at home? Or about how I do this, wherever I do it? And so this is pretty much it. I almost made the, this, a fatal error. If you, if you, I don't know if you saw me, it, before, just where I started, I picked it up and I switched it. Because if you have it the other way around and you pull this cork out, it goes out to the ground. But, uh, I don't know. I haven't done it in a while.
Michelle has a, Michelle has a question online.
All right, Michelle.
I just, I just wanted to say that it's as wonderful to watch and to listen to you speak to that online almost as it is in person. Uh, I remember when you did it, uh, for an earlier session, we were all gathered around and asking you questions. And, uh, uh, we learned a lot and it was very fun. It brought, it brings a lot of things together. While the children or the adults listening may be thinking of one or two pieces of it, it brings it all together. So, uh, it's great doing it. Thanks.
Yeah, well, I really appreciate the opportunity to kind of get back here and polish it up a little bit. I'm already thinking about something like the little, when you do it a few times, you start to think about all these little points where you can like just weave right in at a perfect time. I didn't have my best demonstration here, but, um, I appreciate you sticking with me here and letting me do this for you. So, so yeah, that's, uh, that's that. Should I move into anything else or should I give an outreach update now or, or?
If you want, yes.
Or, or should I, is there anything in the meeting?
Yep, let's go ahead there.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll just, I don't have a whole lot, but, um, let's see. So our pet waste campaign is, is wrapping up. We did see significant improvement on Cougar Creek. We saw no improvements reportedly on Daybreak Park, um, so far. So, um, we'll be meeting with the team a little bit later, uh, next week, I think, and talking about where that campaign will go from here. But kind of in relation to that, the, the Happa boat lodge, which you told me about. I reached out and we've got some signs coming out there.
Sure, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
By many people, yeah.
And, and our parks team is developing like new signage. Cause I, I understand that a lot of the signs are really old and faded out.
And they've been vandalized in the past, yeah.
Yeah, so.
So I've, I've been told, but.
Yeah, so we have, we have our can for clean water signs. And then I, when I spoke with the, um, the crew leader out there for the North Park, he also recommended that we include the, uh, Clark County code regarding pet waste. So I'm going to make some stickers to include on those signs and give those to him as well, so.
Great.
Yeah, and a lot of other parks too. When I was in the team meeting today, I kind of brought that up and our parks, I was like, oh yeah, I want some more of those signs too.
Great, yeah.
So, uh.
Every time, every time I see a piece of pet waste, I see your face.
That's a compliment.
Right, and education works, right?
I saw, I saw a terrible, I probably don't need to share this, but I will. I was at Daybreak Park, the poop camp this most recent time. I don't know if it was a sign or a sign of what, or I don't know what, but there's a praying mantis on a piece of poop that I was about to pick up and I thought, just beautiful insect. I don't know what's going on here, but, um, you see a lot of weird things when you do a pet waste campaign like that, so, uh.
Yeah, just, I guess just for the, for the rest of the folks, I mean, Happa, if you're not familiar with Happa Boat Lodge, it lies directly on the North Fork of the Lewis River. And there's definitely been probably like Daybreak, a lot of pet, a lot of pet waste there.
Yeah.
Just lying around.
Yeah, yeah.
So thank, thank you.
It's tough enough to crack about, you know, what really is going to move the needle for folks. You know, the good news is we got to talk to, you know, dozens and dozens of people out there that use those trails. So hopefully they're, you know, getting the message in. I think people, a lot of people I talked to kind of didn't make that connection to water quality.
Yep.
So I think that, that's, that's a victory right there.
I think a lot of people think it's just, it's an organic material, right? It's, uh, yeah.
Natural.
Yeah, it's compost, right?
Right, yeah. And then the thing I like to say, well, you know, like, you know, there's, you know, there's a hundred and twenty plus thousand dogs in Clark County. And, uh, you know, that's like a small city that doesn't have a sewage treatment plant or a service or something. So, uh, when you start to put it into different perspectives and put it into scale like that, people get the aha moments pretty quick. So November sixteenth is the Stormwater Partners Symposium. Are you on the Lackamasewater Council? Okay, uh, I want to invite some people from there. I, I can invite, uh, the Clean Water Commission as well. Although I do understand that if it's a certain number of people, is that a forum?
No, they're okay because they wouldn't actually, they would just be sitting at the audience. They wouldn't actually be acting on anything.
Okay.
So it would be okay.
Okay, not, not a public meeting or something, okay. So yeah, I will, I will forward that to the most recent, you know, Clean Water Commission email list. And then maybe you can forward it or then if you want to get back to me with who I can have on that. I got an order meeting. Yeah, I'll, I'll take a look, I've got it on my notes here. But the symposium is going to be pretty cool. Um, as you know, I sit in the steering committee for the, the Clean Roots Coalition, which is, uh, Oregon Southwest Washington, kind of like the Puget Sound Starts Here campaign. Follow the Water, Connect the Drops is our campaign. And, um, and so one of the, I, one of the things that we've been doing is creating a logic model and, uh, for the Clean Roots Coalition, the Follow the Water campaign. And so kind of the keynote for the symposium is going to be, um, Katie Maxx from the East Olomos Water Conservation District, who also sits on the, uh, steering committee. Um, and myself will be presenting on how we created a logic model for the Clean Roots Coalition, uh, and the Follow the Water campaign. So it'll be a nice way to both demonstrate the value of planning and evaluation through using logic models while also informing people about the campaign that we've been doing. Kind of, uh, well, I'm giving away from killing birds, but, uh, feeding two birds with one worm. And then we'll also, uh, hear from the Lower Columbia Nature Network, uh, which is a really cool organization that's, uh, getting some funding from, uh, Fish and Wildlife, uh, National Fish and Wildlife. And, uh, Jane Testor Kleiner, who used to work for Clean Water many years ago, kind of organizes that. And, uh, the big key thing for, for that group is really just getting people outdoors and connecting with a bunch of different groups. There's a lot of, a lot of, uh, connections there between the stewardship thing, the stewardship and, and the education thing and the connection to our streams and rivers and natural areas. She'll be talking about her organization. Got the Clark Conservation District talking about their Poop Smart program. We got LSEP will be there also talking about some of the programs. And then we've got, uh, we can have a presentation on the Stream Health Report, the 2020 Stream Health Report. So it'll be a few hours at the Lackamaslake Lodge, so that'll be a great place. Um, I better not, uh, miss an invitation to the Lackamasewater Council. If I have to be at the Lackamaslake Lodge, I'd be in big trouble, uh, but I won't. So, uh, so yeah, we're really looking forward to having you in person. It'll also be a hybrid option as well. Been doing some outreach and kind of preparing with, with our Stormwater Partners, some stuff, uh, to do some outreach for carpet cleaners. We've been working with, uh, the City of Gresham actually kind of spearheaded this a number of years back. And we've been doing it for most years. They didn't do it last year, but, uh, they basically have a, something that they mail out to carpet cleaners. You know, carpet cleaners are tough enough to crack because they're here, but they're there, but they're there. Their, whose jurisdiction are they in? They're everywhere, really. And they're, it's pretty important because they're mobile here and there. So just basically doing some outreach about the importance and how to dispose their waste properly. Uh, and so that gets sent out to, uh, on a regional basis throughout the whole Portland metro area, including, uh, Clark County jurisdictions as well. Don't Trip and Drive program, um, still going and we are, uh, the Watershed Alliance will be holding three workshops later in the year. And they're, we're kind of in discussion about piloting, potentially piloting, um, some reimbursement programs to, uh, better support lower income people to get their vehicles fixed. The obvious thing when we started this program, the obvious question that came up was, well, a lot of people that have leaky vehicles may have difficulty fixing these leaky vehicles, but we have an interest, our community, our streams have an interest in having these vehicles fixed. So, um, whether or not that reimbursement program gets off the ground, hopefully it does. Uh, but that will wrap up the grant, uh, this grant project for that, uh, Don't Trip and Drive program at the end of this year. Our, uh, Legacy Lands program with Clean Water Funds, uh, recently purchased what was formerly Cedar's Golf Course. And that's along, uh, Salmon Creek there. And, uh, it's now it's called the Jordi Joma Natural Area. It's right next to, um, the Salmon Morgan Creek Natural Area, um, which was also purchased from the same person, Gordy Joma, uh, along Salmon Creek. And, uh, and so they're doing a ribbon cutting, uh, October nineteenth. And, um, and I was asked to give a, a nature walk at that. So I'm really excited about doing that and just being able to talk about the creek. It's an amazing property acquisition for Clean Water, for Legacy Land. There's a ton of creek frontage that, uh, that that acquisition, uh, enables us to, to have. And there's not a lot of plans for it yet. It's a pretty cool spot though. I'd encourage you to check it out, um, if you're around. Almost like, uh, some kind of like weird horror movie should be filmed there. Cause there's like this golf course that's all like overgrown and you're just like, what is this place? But it's, you know, eventually it's going to become a, a great natural area, um, and, uh, lots of opportunity there. Our Watershed Science Project is still churning along. We, we purchased all the signs. And so now, uh, I think our sign crew should be getting out there and starting to install some signs. And these are the Watershed Signs where, uh, a stream crosses a name, or a street crosses a named stream. And so we had previously received a grant from the Lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board, the Clark County Clean Water Restoration Fund Grant, uh, that Chris had referred to. But that did not qualify, uh, the, the East Fork Lewis River and the North Fork Lewis River Watership did not qualify to that grant. And so we are finishing that project now. Washstop is going to help us install some of the signs there. So that, that should be going up soon, like by the end of the year. And then our Backyard Habitats Certification Program is still, still going strong. Andrea Logan's managing that contract. Um, and I think that's all, those are all the updates that I have, unless you have any other questions from me about any of the work that I've been doing or, uh, Stormwater Partners stuff or anything like that. All right.
All right, well, thank you again, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next order of business is a roundtable discussion, a member roundtable. I don't know if anybody individually has anything they want to raise. Jeff?
We talked a little bit at the last meeting, um.
Sorry. Okay, Josh, I'll put you in the queue, you're number two. Go ahead, Jeff.
So I was looking into this Burr Bridge Creek partnership a little bit, just, it's almost in my backyard. I walk along there, pick up litter, help with planting along there. Um, amazingly enough, there are only two parties involved in it. Department of Ecology and City of Vancouver. And I'm thinking, where's Clark County? We do have water, like Cold Creek, up by where I live as well, begins outside City of Vancouver limits. Eventually it comes in and goes in Burr Bridge Creek, it's also one of our rotating monitor sites. Um, so I was looking at some of the documentation, other than I could find out county-wise is that the monitor work 2019, maybe in the 2020, that went into the 2020 report that started this whole partnership off. Um, did acknowledge, um, some work by Jeff Schenabel and Marlena Milosevic. Um, I did have some contact with the new chairman, um, person that originally had started it up, has changed jobs and isn't there anymore. A gentleman named Nate Woodard is now heading up the partnership. Uh, he's a TDML and Water Quality Lead for Department of Ecology. And, um, just asked, you know, why was the county left out? And, um, by the way, you haven't had a meeting in a year, you know, the report's supposed to come out in 2020, or 2022, which is now. And I, I got two things from him, one is that, um, there's an intentional pause right now. They're working on a draft of this action plan, which is the final document that's supposed to come out of the partnership. Um, once they do have that draft together, the partnership will be called back into action. Maybe this fall, I'm not sure exactly the timing on that. And he didn't give me a date either. But, uh, when it does resume, he assured me that he will reach out to Clark County Clean Water, see if we wanna be represented as part of the partnership. It's nice to read these things online after the fact, but to not have any inputs in it, I thought was a little odd that we got left out somehow.
Okay. So we'll be, somebody will be in contact with us at least have, will at least be knowledgeable.
It's probably gonna be Nate Woodard who's heading it up.
Okay, all right, great, okay, great, thank, thank you, Jeff. Uh, any, any questions about what Jeff mentioned? Okay, all right, uh, Josh, go ahead, please.
Thank you, um, I just had a couple of things. One was I wanted to thank the speaker from the Lower Columbia Estuary Partnership, both for his, uh, very interesting and engaging, um, talk and, and presentation of, of visual aids, um, and also for all the work that they as an organization do. Uh, the second and related thing is, um, if you have not gone to see the Steiger Wild Wildlife Refuge where it's been reopened to the river, um, it's definitely worth seeing. It's a very impressive piece of restoration. It's come along very nicely, it got to have the, um, it got to re-experience the full wetland experience, uh, this spring when it flooded almost all the way to, up to Highway fourteen during those very high flows and the continuous rain that lasted, um, you know, into May. It was really something to see, but it's, it's an excellent restoration project. The, the people that did the work clearly did an excellent job with a lot of care, cause the plantings are all taking off. Um, it's really worth taking a look at. And that's all I have, and I, I have to step away from the meeting now, but, uh, thanks everyone for, for the presentation. And, oh, and last thing, uh, Eric Lambert, uh, your enthusiasm is completely infectious. Um, you know, great job on the, the watershed pollution demonstration.
Yeah, great, uh, great, thank you, Josh, for, for bringing those two things up. And yes, Steiger Wild is, if you haven't been there, amazing, uh, the work they've done. I've heard there's been some, uh, signs of salmon already spawning out up in there, so all good, all good stuff. Um, at least that's my understanding. Uh, next, uh, item on the agenda is the discussion of environmental justice, uh, connecting diversity, equity, and inclusion to the Clean Water Commission's mission. And Alice, I don't know, you, you, uh, I missed part of the last meeting, so I don't know if this was discussed there. What, what is it that, if there's an action item we should look at or?
It's, there is not an action item. Um, it was part of the roundtable discussion that, um, Brendan was interested in having this, and, and I know that, um, part of the roundtable, um, members of the commission wanted to spend some time better, um, having a discussion about their personal and individual experiences, responsibilities, where they're coming from and where they would like to see the commission going. And part of that was also the environmental justice aspect of how it relates to the mission. And so that was, um, most of the rest of it was, um, the roundtable. And, um, this part was supposed to take up, uh, a lot of the meeting.
Take up a lot of the meeting today?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, at least that was the intention in September, was, um, people wanted to have more time to have conversations.
Okay.
And if I'm not mistaken, part of the intent was to build this into the bylaws as well?
Yes.
Okay. Uh. Okay, I guess who wants to start off that discussion? Anybody? Since I missed the part where it was raised. So I don't know who was.
Well, I think it's obvious that it's in everyone's best interest to be as inclusive as we possibly can. And it's incumbent upon all the members of the board here to do what they can to recruit minority members or members of, to increase the diversity of the board, since we do tend to be old white men. And that's probably not reflective of the community or what we need to address in the future. If indeed, one of our biggest assets is how we can influence public opinion, we need to engender a broader scope in the board. And, and I think all that makes sense, but the only concern I have about this is a lot of this, to me, seems desirable and almost consensus. And I do think we can codify it in our bylaws. But the reality is, it's also a bit of displacement activity in my mind in that it doesn't, and it's not going to have a real direct impact on stream quality in the near term. And I do think that the board has to give some thought as well, what actions we can become involved with that actually have a positive impact on the thing we are responsible for, clean water in the county. And so I don't, I guess I caution against getting too far downside loads or, or process type oriented issues. I, I think we gotta keep our eye on the prize and keep focused on trying to do the right thing for water.
Uh, Michelle, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, say that in the partnerships, um, working group, we were looking at three, um, potential, um, sort of avenues of effort. Um, and because the partnerships, uh, you know, Eric in the outreach work that he has done, he's made such advances, um, we were looking at partnerships that might be both, uh, internal to the, um, to the county, so cross departments. Um, and, uh, so relative to the diversity aspect, um, we were looking at and thinking about, uh, information on how Clark County is, um, uh, you know, approaching diversity, uh, because the more the educational material uh, can be communicated and can be made accessible to a, a broad range of people who may not always look in the places, um, that are sources that, uh, uh, because they're too busy or they're out of town or what have you, um, or they don't have access to digital modes or what, whatever. That it, that, uh, the education piece could go farther and the activities and behavior changes, such as the, um, the dog walking effort and, uh, cleanup effort, uh, might have a little more impact and direct impact now. And the other piece, of course, is on the, directly the appointments to the board. And I'm sort of interested in, we talked about, well, could you create, you know, should we help create a database uh, for distribution of the announcement? Uh, but it seemed that that might be something Clark County was already doing. So, uh, like to know if we have any more information on the context of the DEI program with Clark County, such that it might impact both, uh, both the appointment process and then also the messaging.
I can talk a little, Michelle, I can talk a little bit about that. I was gonna talk about it more in the, in part of my report, um, about the new commission, um, recruitment. Um, we have been trying to focus on getting the information out to, um, as diverse of populations in our area as possible. Um, and emphasizing, uh, changing the, even the, the way that the, um, uh, communication went out, how it was written, we changed it. Um, it's still a little more formal, um, than I was hoping, but, you know, we're, we're government, so we have to make it formal. Um, but Eric is gonna be putting something, um, is that today or the, the Watership Wednesday is?
Yeah, I, I did that today. It went out on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, Nextdoor.
Okay, I thought, I was like, okay, was that today or is that the third Wednesday of the month? Uh, but it's, so it's, this, um, the speaking of the new commissioners was, um, heavily put out. Um, and then one of the other things that, um, we are also working on is, um, I actually, um, brought this up, I'm on the, um, what they call CCE, it's the Clark County Equity Diversity Inclusion Group. And, um, so it's the DEI group for, um, the county, uh, employees. And one of the things that we talked about a lot was, um, not only what tools do we as, um, employees and as the county, what tools do we need to have to make us better and more effective in reaching, um, the underserved populations, the overburdened populations, you know, and looking like for us as environmental justice? But how can we better reach those populations and the, um, that are out there? And, um, and as well as, how do we change our outreach to better serve them? Like GIS, um, having the, the maps, the online maps, having various filters so that it's in different languages, so that there's actually an interface where somebody could read in a different language. Um, because we have a number of different populations that, um, Russians, Spanish, Tuukis, um, and a few of the others that are out there that, uh, we could potentially do more with as well as, um, having some layers put in where, um, income levels and race and other, and ownerships are overlaid. Cause this is not like Atlanta where there is a specific area that has been set aside for generations of, um, minorities. We are, in Clark County, are much more diversified. And so that we as, um, employees can, one, look and see where long-term capital planning, twenty years down the road or those kind of things, looking at how can we better meet the needs or lessen the impacts? How, and how can we document and how can we make sure that we are, um, positively impacting our residents as well as minimizing the negative? And being able to evaluate that and look at that as, um, in a more, um, substantial and, um, scientific method. So, um, we did a lot of talk about those kind of things and just some of the tools that we need. And, um, and, you know, we don't have somebody on, in this, on staff to be able to help us with these kind of things or even develop policy. Um, and one of the things like with this is, you know, with the boards is having, um, do you take the most qualified person or you, or change shifting towards having it, we need to have this voice? Cause I, I think a lot about what Brendan mentioned, we don't know what we don't know. And, um, and one of the other things that our Communication Outreach Group has talked a lot about is how about the families and the people that, um, work late in the afternoon and the evenings and can't get in here? What, what are we doing with, for those people or for, you know, so whether that's with hybrid or what, I don't know, or childcare? So there's a lot there, and I guess there's a lot of, um, missions that are actually looking at changing their meeting times. Has, there's some, several of them have changed their meeting times. I don't know if that's good or bad, I'm just saying what I've been told.
Yeah, maybe if I could, uh, add on to that or, I don't know, comment on that, I guess I, I should say. It kind of goes back to what, uh, Bob was saying. I mean, we're all here largely because of some element of privilege. We, we have the ability to cut time out of our schedule, we're not, I'm, I'm making an assumption here, likely worried about losing out on paying bills or the mortgage because, you know, we're not getting paid here. Um, we're not having to make the hard decisions about, do I volunteer in my community to serve on this? Or do I, you know, try and make the mortgage payment or try and save a little bit extra? So maybe from an equity standpoint, I think maybe looking at alternate times, uh, might be just one, one avenue. Uh, I, I mean, I don't know what that would be.
Yeah.
And maybe that's an area where we need to get some feedback.
I, I think it's going to come down to individual councilmen recruiting, uh, and actively recruiting qualified people, qualified minorities. More females, uh, more people of color and, and literally, literally work at it. I think we all have to do that in order to, to do this. Because this isn't something that you can put out on our website, I'm sorry.
Right, but, but, yeah, who's checking, who's checking the county website?
Yeah, yeah.
Early on, like.
This is kind of, uh, left up to us. When we run into somebody in what we do that, that could help in some decent way, uh, and we need to twist his or her arm, uh, to, to do it. And I don't actually know any other way. I know, I suffered with this at Eastern for years, trying to get teachers that were from a diverse population. And it was like pulling teeth. You treasure anyone you got. Now, I treasured the guys that came in the door, you know, because, oh, I had, I had elementary teachers to teach. I had a house full of women. But this is, it is us going out and actually asking the question, I think.
Yeah, I think there's, I, I, I agree, it's, I, I would agree with Roger. I mean, it's up to all of us as individuals, as a, as a body collectively and as individuals to, to take this on and do some of the hard work, go out there and recruit. And, and I guess the question comes up of, and Alice, you alluded to it, of, of, of bringing people on and what, what counts as quote unquote qualified. As you, you could probably remember, the last time we had a lot of heartburn with our rubric, uh, because I thought it was quite exclusive. Um, not to say that those it brought on were not qualified, but I don't wanna make that leap by any assumption. But it was, you know, uh, you know, you can get a whole bunch of points if you have, you know, certain degrees. It's like, well, those are, those are great and those are one aspect of qualification, but there are many other different pieces. We need to think about some balance there, um.
And one of the things, um, not only with the tools, and one of the things that I was gonna tell you about, which was kind of exciting, is, um, the head of HR. going to tell you about, which was kind of exciting, is the head of HR, he's rather new, he's just started December or January, and he is just helping make things happen. I mean, he's really, really amazing. And I had made these comments, and I don't know if it was, if it was William Moonfield or if it was one of the guys from IT, but this list before was just a list of names. And then after our meeting with them, well, less than a week, these all became links. That's in your hand, handout? This Community Outreach, all of these are now links that I can go, because I was, because it's just me. And so that was also going to be one of the things that I was going to ask, is if there are anybody that's out there who can look at some of these lists and look at, and I can get you the contact information, and if anybody wants to, or you are a part of, or you're involved in any of these agencies, please feel free. Because the one thing that's the most important, as Roger had alluded to, is, is the relationship aspect. And so it's developing those relationships and actively seeking out the voices that we don't have at the table. And that's something that I think is, is really important. And one of the things that is really very encouraging for me as a member of the committee is that we actually will be having, the county manager will be coming to the next meeting, and they've made some commitments to being able to participate more actively with this. So hopefully, you know, we'll have some more traction with this and have some more discussions about how as a county are we developing the relationships and, and it is going to be looking a lot differently in how, how we communicate with our residents and our visitors and the tourists and everybody else that's coming up and down the I-5 corridor and who live here and play here. And so how we communicate with them, I think, is, is really important. So these are just some of the lists that were out there. I know we have a lot of, we have a limited relationship with the Chinese-American community because of the Creek Renaming Project. And I don't think most of those are on there. So, you know, that's going to be one of the things that I want to make sure that they get added on for this, for this list that we have it. So that's a few of the things for trying to be more inclusive and getting it out onto social media beyond just putting it out in the flash alerts and in those areas. But also, I think it's most effective is, is actually having those communications with people that you know or, and they may not need to be, have a PhD, but if they're passionate, if they're a passionate outdoorsman, or if they're a passionate, you know, fisherman or fisherwoman or, you know.
Check your vehicle.
Yes.
While we're talking about inclusion.
I know, I'm sorry. I guess, you know.
Was the record show Alice's?
Well, I was, yes. But I was looking at you and you.
I know, I understand, yeah. But you, all the things you were describing are me, the passionate angler and that.
Yes. And so those are those things that I, that I think that those are, you know, and waterfowl and, and all those things are, are important to be looking at. So that's kind of where, you know, on the big picture, on the DEI, we're making a lot of strides. I know there's stuff on the ballot, how that comes out with the votes, that may change things one way or the other, I don't know. But I think there's definitely the commitment is there to move forward with this and, because it's something that's important.
Well, and also, so do I understand that we don't have an environmental justice coordinator and any sort of environmental justice liaison positions in the county? Is that what I understood from?
I don't believe so. Do you?
No, we have no, no diversity and inclusion voting staff whatsoever.
Oh, wow. That's, okay.
I think they were laid off in the 2009 meltdown.
Okay.
And that position.
So, I mean, maybe to Bob's point, the influence, I think that was a key word, I picked up that, you know, as part of our job as community members on this, this commission, that we go to the council and maybe, I mean, we would have to decide as a group, of course, if those are things, I'm not sure it has to be done today. It seems like a little bit more of an in-depth discussion about what the actual points would be we would take, but it seems to me that that's, that's pretty glaring to me.
And it may be something in the, for the end of report.
Yeah.
But I, I think though, that we're going to end up with who we end up with, and it could be old white men and young.
Yeah. But, yeah.
But we are going to have to keep our own focus, looking to include all these issues as, as we start developing program again now that the COVID is maybe a little bit over and we can get back to work. It is to keep our program marching in a, in a very positive way. Because you're not going to legislate who comes and who volunteers and who wants to be here, even, even as hard as you recruit. You're going to, you're going to get what you're going to get.
Yeah.
So many people that have time.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point and, you know, maybe regardless of who we end up with, is just trying to make more space for voice. And then maybe that goes back to being incumbent upon us to go out and give that voice to people who necessarily can't commit to participating for various reasons. But I think, you know, going back to what Michelle mentioned, I picked up on, on something related to education. I think that's an important piece. There's, not that I want to cite homework, I'll throw the offer out there. I was reading a, a research article on stormwater management and the influence, I'm just looking at it here, the influence of race, gender, and age education on the willingness to participate in stormwater management. So if people are interested in, I just have the, through general internet search, I'm able to find the pre-publication, so I can't watch for how it finally ended up. I, I could send that out to folks who are interested.
I would like to.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
I could, I could easily.
Send it to everybody, yeah.
Okay, well, I will get the, the actual publication, but we run into copyright issues. So just know that the, the piece I'm sending out is not, is not the final stamp of a publication.
Just, that's the opposite.
Well, no, the publisher has rights over the, it was, it ended up in a peer-reviewed publication, so I'm not sure how much it changed from what's here, if at all, to the peer-reviewed publication. But I, I found it enlightening about some of the summary pieces. It seems quite germane to our discussion on stormwater here and DEI.
One of the things I want to make sure, I actually had a, went to a very interesting discussion meeting back in May, the Gonzaga Business School put it on, about inclusion. And one of the things that's really important to do, especially where we're in hybrid meetings, is making sure that the people who are on the phone and not in the room, who are on video, also are able to make sure that we are able to participate and that you are actively involved. So Michelle, make sure you please speak up or if you have anything, because I know a lot of times people just start talking around the table. And so I want to make sure that we are as inclusive as possible, even in our group. But that was one of the things that came out was that, making sure that people that are online get to talk to.
Alice, don't we usually have a working group session? Like, we did the strategic plan one year.
Yeah, listening.
Oh. Okay. I was going to suggest that we devote a, a working groups, but.
Oh, well, we can do that again, too. We can, we can set up another special meeting.
Well, I, I would ask the group, I've been going, the willingness to, to do that. I mean, it's your time.
Well, I would say as a relatively new member to this board, integration to the board has been difficult due to the, to all the.
Yeah.
And actually, I find even tonight's meeting, as limited as our topics have been, to be very beneficial is to help me a lot anyway, feel like a more involved in this group. And I think going forward, if we have more in-person meetings and people are able to have these kinds of discussions, that will be very beneficial, too.
I mean, maybe we, you mentioned privilege, so maybe we try and capitalize on that privilege if we have such flexible schedules for, for many of us. I certainly don't want to say that. I know it's not the case for everybody. Sorry, Roger.
That's right. I, I also think, going back to having some field meetings, like you, like happened in the past, would really be, it would set some real tone for what we were doing and give us some motivation to, to get on to the job of getting the water quality.
Yeah, and show you all the dog waste at the park.
Yeah, exactly.
Point out, yeah, we can do that.
I mean, our, our kids are out every week doing water quality, and you cannot believe the people that come by and say, what's going on? Definitely is the greatest training or process you ever seen, to actually get out and do it and, and share with what you do.
Yeah.
It is cool, really is.
Yeah. I mean, it's similar, it's, it's tiger wall.
Oh, yeah.
I was lucky enough, because I'm part of the board, to get the special tour, and there were people out there, who are those people? Those are so special, they get the, have to ride on the quad, you know? Well, then you get to, you know, talk to people and, and that's the education.
Yeah, yeah.
Component. So I guess.
I will work on trying to get a.
Yeah, I mean, well, let me, before we do that, I mean, how does everybody feel about maybe having another, in addition, another special working session that we devote to the topic of diversity, equity, inclusion slash environmental justice?
Sure. Is it too soon to have that? Because we're into the point where we're getting new member applications, they're going to come down the pike very close, very shortly.
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, we ostensibly, in January, we will have new members, right, Alice? At the first January meeting?
Two to three new members.
And we're, my month is in October, so we only have one more meeting, right? In November?
Yeah. Well, when is the deadline for applications?
The 31st of October.
All right.
We have to have it open.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we're kind of.
Definitely will, yeah.
It's up to you as the board. Michelle, were you trying to say something? I saw something flash.
Yeah, because in Michelle, I don't know if it's part of the inclusion, Michelle wants to be, or I should say, all our board members who are choosing not to reapply, if they want to be part of a conversation, that needs to happen this year.
If you want, go ahead, Michelle.
Yeah, like, like every 10th word is coming through.
Can we launch your video? Here it is. One of the things that's up to you as a board, and we'll see if Michelle reconnects.
Ma'am, Michelle, maybe you could throw something in the chat if, if you had a comment, and we'll try and pick it up there while we're waiting for your internet to catch up or ours. Sorry, Alice, go ahead.
No worries. One of the things, it's up to you, and I'm more than happy to do whatever you want. You can start the process with the members that are on this term and continue it on into the new year. Or you can, she left, so I think she'll come back.
Yeah.
I hope she comes back, because we need to have a vote.
At some point later, yeah, right?
Think of it this way, this is an ongoing problem. This is, this is something that we really have to address. We should, we should really address this. And even if all of us really crank the wheel, we're not going to probably get all that much traction in the near term. But this is a, this is a project going forward. And, and it needs, we need to think about this and, and how we do it. Everything I've ever done for the last 30 years has had an element of this kind of thing in it. And it's always difficult to approach it. And you have to work at it, if you do.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, from, from being involved in a, in a number of DEI initiatives, is that, you know, we, if we're going to take, take the topic on, it needs to be, it can't be performative. Because that's counter, counterproductive and in some ways reinforces the negative issues going on. So if, if that's, I was asking the group, I mean, are you willing to really, I guess, are we, I should say, are we really going to take this on and dedicate, you know, at least another working session to it? And I agree with Roger, it's not something that we're just going to come up with some things and then it's fixed. Michelle? We didn't get what you were saying earlier.
Okay, I, I was saying, I, things were going wrong, I could only hear a few words as something went wrong with the connection and I just had to get off and get back on again. So my apologies, I've missed the last three or four minutes, something.
Well, I guess our, our question was, you know, if we dedicate a special meeting to the topic, do we wait till we have new commissioners on, which will be next year? But that would exclude current commissioners who are not seeking reappointment from the conversation. So I guess that's the question. Do we want to have it this year or wait next year?
Well, in spite of my not being here next year, I really think it would be a good idea to include next year's commissioners, because it would lay some good groundwork for y'all as a team. And in fact, there are people who do diversity-related work who could come in and do a little bit of moderated, sort of, team building and understanding around the idea, which might be particularly important if we can reach out to some people and maybe make sure, for example, that the neighborhood associations all get copies, specifically email to them to please communicate among their contacts for, for the, this particular position, these positions. Anyway.
Okay.
It's an option.
Thank you. Thank you. So it, it sounds like we, we want to have a, a working session and that that working session would be next calendar year. Good, okay. Alice, could, could you help us out with finding some, some dates, I suppose?
Sure. I will look into end of, sometime in January, first part of February, or, or would you rather have it, I could do it, we could, you could have it during the, the spring special meeting, which is usually around the end of March, first of April. I mean, I think.
That makes the most sense to me.
Okay.
Along the line, we, I've never seen a meeting planned, I don't know what's coming next year. I don't know what the projects we're going to do are. I don't know if we're going to have projects. I don't know where we're going as an organization, and that is a little troubling to me. We have these discussions like this and we see presentations, but as, as a commissioner, I don't really know as much as I need to know about clean water in this county. I don't really know how this county operates for clean water. I get snippets here and snippets there. Part of it was Zoom, but still, I've been around for a year and don't have this foundational process. And I remember comments when I started, did it take you really a year to get hooked into what's going? hooked into what's going on? And I don't feel very hooked.
Yeah.
And so I, I'd like to have some kind of process, even between now and the, and Santa Claus, where we start a little bit of a look at planning what we're going to do, what's important, what problems exist in the county right now? Where the clean water, the public works part needs some citizen help? If not as far as organization, cooperation, uh, you know, all those proper words. So what I'm saying is we need to know what we're doing and how we're going to do it and plan that, that whole process. I've done it in every organization I've ever been in because that's, that's an important part of getting the work done and.
Okay, well, thanks for volunteering.
I, I, I'll do that. And you, I'll tell you what, you, it's, yeah, I can do that. I can do that very easily. But I don't have access to do it. That's the problem. It's because we have, we have not gotten access. This is the first time I've seen the lights of your eyes, except I'm a fun two. And we don't know who each other really is until we get out in the water and get our feet muddy.
And the other thing that would be helpful too is the ability to meet with some of the staff. I know I have questions about monitoring. It was easier for me to eat, meet with the staff of the city of Vancouver than it is to meet with staff here. And to me, that's peculiar. There are just some real basic questions and, and my real interest is in the research end of this. I'm interested in looking at cumulative impacts. And like I said, as part of the research group, one of the things I wanted to see is who are the players? And I'm still finding that out. Would come to these meetings and some guy shows up from some other cooperative group who's comprised of several other groups. I have no idea what their authority is, why they're involved or why they're spending our money, I believe. And why does it work this way? And is this the most efficient way to get the job done where we're here to sort of recommend doing?
So if, if I will, if I may, there's a teeny bit of frustration here. And it, it needs to somehow, and I don't know who does the addressing, but it, we need to maybe address it as a whole.
Okay.
And I, and I don't know how you would organize it or this character back here would say, hmm, do it, right?
Yeah, well, I think, um, you know, it'd be great to have, you know, I guess a laundry list of what it is you would like to know and so we can get you connected with the right people. I'm wearing this too. And, you know, the public works side of the county right now, there's, our program is relatively stable. A lot of turmoil, a lot of on outside of our program, the department. So there's a lot of moving parts from my end up in public works right now, but in terms of getting you, you know, connected with the folks who do our monitoring, I certainly think we could, we could facilitate something like that relatively easy. I, you know, unfortunately, I don't have a good, uh, I don't have an understanding of how staff and the task have interacted with this commission. I know there's been a lot of turnover in the division manager position and some division managers have been more autonomous commission than others. And honestly, I don't know how long I'm going to be doing this role. So it's, you know, those are some of the challenges. I would certainly, as at some point in the future, we trans, this position transitions to a permanent manager, I would certainly encourage that manager to engage with the commission and take an active role in, you know, helping you connect with a portion of the business of the county actually does. I think that's part of the frustration is, it's no fault of your own, of course, because there's been a lot of turnover in the program manager. We've only had one, in the time I've been here, Alice, correct me, we've only had one permanent one, Justin, right? In the three.
In the time you've been here.
Three years.
And he was here for just a. Five managers.
Right. He was here for just a short time. And of course, he had his clean water commission background, but he was the manager who was only here. And then we're still without a public works director, right? Yes, and we have been for some, some time, a permanent public works director. I think it's still out for search, yeah.
Let's, let's take, look, look at solving this problem because it, it's, I think, at least here and, and what I've heard, this is kind of a, a stumbling block. And it's going to be a stumbling block for new commissioners that come aboard. See if we could sit between now and, and January and do some real planning of field trips, presentations, projects that could be done and really dig into it and what are the priorities within here, within the county as far as clean water goes? And how they're addressed and how we might interact with that addressing process? I think if we could do that, if we could put that kernel together, we'd have a year and, and have some projects that we knew that we were going to do. And it would attract some valuable commissioners. Am I, am I all wet?
No, one of the things that, and we probably have diversified out some of the speakers and one of the things that we can look at doing again, because that's why we were sort of having the speakers, was because the commission didn't know what the clean water division did. So I would have the monitoring people, Bob Patterson, you know, coming in and talking about the, um, the business inspection side of it, having somebody, you know, Carrie and Rich talk about the private stormwater inspections so that as commissioners, you know what our group does and Jeff Snobel will talk about the capital infrastructure and the capital plan, the six-year plan at the November meeting. A lot of times he does it at this meeting, but I wanted to make sure that you had enough time to have this discussion. So, you know, we just did a few little demonstrations and discussions. So, um, and I had else up on the, um, I had asked them back in, um, in March to give a presentation. So, um, I didn't want to kick them over another six months. So, um, I didn't cancel them because one of the things was, and they just talked a little bit about it, but I think it's important for, you know, um, you to understand what they do with, um, with the education outreach for the students and how, how much they moved and challenged towards working with the kids and recreating the entire curriculum so that it could be taught online and all of the, the hands-on things that, I mean, they were sending dissection kits out to, you know, people and various things. And so they did a lot of things that were very, um, very innovative.
I think having them come in was, was good. I mean, I, I, I asked them, I saw a presentation at one of the board meetings. I had asked them, I think I made the comment, I've been on this commission for almost three years. I had no idea that we were involved in all of this stuff. I learned it from another source. So I think having them come in is, is, is good because to, to Bob's point, it gets, it, it does get confusing. It's almost like we need some sort of mind map to connect all the pieces.
And maybe it's one of those things that, and, and, and I know Roger, I know you're looking at and wanting to have the structure. And maybe it's something that, um, where we've been very disconnected, that we look at having very strong commitment on the working group and potentially chair or whatever, but we have a very strong commitment from the working groups because I still haven't seen any action plans for 2022. I'll just throw it out there.
From the working groups?
From the working groups and it's October. So, um, that is something that, um, maybe instead of going for annual action plans, you as a working group, um, each, the working groups are, the focuses, the focus groups or whatever you want to call them, they are, they may have a much longer range or a bigger program or something that is more long-term and goals that you want to achieve that may not necessarily be, and then, um, done in a year. And that could be something that we could definitely change with the bylaws and some things like that so that we can start working towards having a better idea so that it's not floundering and you're not having to restart every year. And I know that the pandemic has definitely made it much more difficult in a lot of ways and the turnover has definitely made it more difficult to be able to make a lot of the meetings happen. Some are able to make them a little bit easier, but I think when it comes time to making the decision and actually creating the action plans and actually going forward. And it is hard. It's an advisory board. You're advising, you know, the division and the department and the council and the, and the county manager. I know that that had a really big impact. This last, um, me, uh, when you had your annual, um, uh, report, the, the council and, um, sixth floor, the, the senior leadership really took to heart the discussion about how stretched thin the clean water department is in, um, in the number of employees and where this is going and where, and that recommendation that you had made about, hey, we need to have more inspectors. We need more monitoring scientists. We need more of this. We need, you know, and where this is growing. And I know that they have taken that to heart and that is something that I know that leadership is working on. I haven't, I don't know what the 2023 budget is, but I know that that was a focus and then, you know. So those are some of the things that, um.
Yeah, I think maybe, you know, for me, it would, it would help to have more of that. I'm an operations person. Have that understanding of how all the pieces are connected because if, if I'm, if I'm serving as an advisory position going before the council, and, and we need to advise that either the department is stretched way too thin or it's, it's way, has way too many resources. I really doubt that's the issue, but just for the sake of balancing it, um, you know, that, need to have some knowledge around that, who the players are, what they're doing, uh, why, uh, because we do have a lot of really smart people uh, on this, on this commission. And as an advisory group, you know, we're, we have the ability to say things to the council that you all don't, uh, or wouldn't, or maybe shouldn't. You, you know, I would, that's why I work for myself.
If I could follow up on that.
Yeah.
I think you're now hitting exactly on what we need to do as a board. And there is a difference between the board and the division. And my impression of the division right now is it is stretched thin. It has very defined jobs. It has infrastructure that is taken care of. It has inspections on new development that it has to do. It has an outreach and education component that seems to be working pretty well. The reality is they can't think beyond the things that it's like the old adage, it, it's tough to remember your objective was to drain the swamp when you're up to your ass and alligators. And basically, they're doing all they can do just to do that. They're not looking at the big picture, the stovepipe thing. Why different political jurisdictions have their fingers in the same pie? Are they, are they actually working most efficiently? Are there ways that these things can be condensed that would make them a more efficient operation and lead to better clean water results? How do we put more money on the ground to do the things that will be most beneficial to clean water rather than put them into bureaucracy? And that's a, a personal bugaboo of mine that we tend to spend too much time on mechanics and not enough time on actually the things that make a real difference on the ground. And so those are the kind of things I think that the board gets involved with, maybe make suggestions to the county commissioners about. And the big picture, what are the cumulative impacts? And I know the county commission doesn't want to hear this, but somebody needs to think about climate change.
Yeah.
And the relative impact that's going to have on water quality in this county. And like it or not, this seems to be, well, I don't think it's debatable that it's occurring and that we basically have to make plans. How are we going to maintain good quality water in this picture? That's not something the division's going to worry about. They're worried about the next fifty miles of pipeline that they got to get in because we got three new subdivisions going on. And so that's, I think the board has to get out of the sort of mechanic stuff as well and get into this bigger picture question.
Think of it this way. I'm an old professor. I understand training and I understand teaching and I understand how that whole process works. And if we take a look at next year, we take a look at 2023 and we say, okay, this, these are the six things that the clean water division does. This is six projects, this six programs that the county is involved in that are around water. And we spend six months, every two months, actually investigating, doing, paying attention to that one thing. We will come out of that by the end of December. We'll come out of that with a very, very decent picture of what this bunch does. And we won't get it if we just sit around and slap our jaws. But if we put it together as a project that we start in January and, and get our feet muddy and go out and see where these places are, what is being done, how is being done, uh, then we'll take the new bodies that come on board, take those new bodies, train them, train ourselves for that matter, because I certainly don't know what this whole process is about. So if you do that, you could have your monthly meetings where you spend some time reviewing it in February and April or whatever and putting all that whole project together. By the time you got to December, you'd have yourself a Christmas present. Uh, I, I don't know if such a thing is too, uh, ambitious, but that kind of thing would allow us to know what was going on and be involved and be able to make some halfway decent recommendations going up the hill.
Well, I, I'd not, I think it would be ambitious. That doesn't mean it's unattainable, but it certainly would be ambitious, but you know, we could probably continue talking for quite some time. I think, you know, one thing that to think about is we have two to three new members coming on in January again. So there's going to be a big turnover. And so whatever it's, quote unquote, is that we're going to do or that the commission is going to do, maybe that needs to be at the start of the new year.
Think of it this way. If we put this together now, in the next three months, we put it together now, then we'd have the program in place in January. And so we would have that January project or do it in February. Okay. But see, the February project that we were going to do, But see, the February project that we were going to do, April, the April project that we were going to do. And that way, not only would we have focus, but we would have the ability to plan for that focus and interpret what was going on. Am I, I, am I all wet?
I don't think so. What I'm, I don't want to extend this too much longer either because I think we're all probably pretty tired here.
You still have to vote on something.
Yeah, but the reality, I, where this comes together for me is maybe your planning document becomes our annual progress report. And that what we do is we embody in that annual report, this is what we think we should be doing both near term and down the road.
Correct.
And that we focus our, because we apparently, and again, this is another bureaucratic requirement and, and those things don't excite me a lot. But apparently we have to have this report done relatively soon anyway, right? We have to have our annual.
We'll give it, uh, to the council, technically, I think the bylaws say in the first quarter of the new year.
So the reality of this is I think what we do is we combine these two things. That we put your planning document to work, we put it on paper, we make it part of our annual report. We say this is the direction we're going in, these are the issues we think we want to tackle. These are some of the things that I think where your focus is, is near term, we're going to have some objectives that we all clearly understand and are working towards. And longer term, there will be other sort of bigger picture things that I think we need to address as well. And to me, that makes sense and I think it really comes down to, and I'm sure this is where Alice's concern is, at some stage, somebody's going to beat on me and say, where's the report? And how we get the report written and, and how we get this done. And, and so it, it seems to me that, that Roger, you, you are volunteering and I will volunteer as well to be one of the people that works with you on this. And let's get a couple of other folks that have the interest and willingness to do this and start to pull this together.
Okay. Okay, Alice, so maybe make sure the, if we could leave the minutes reflect the volunteering. And that we need, that we need some more, that there was the request for some more folks to assist in that, in that effort as well of those who are.
It looks like Michelle wants to.
Going to be left. Yep, Michelle?
I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm definitely, um, interested. I think it's a great approach. I, I think the minutes are also going to need to reflect a clear statement of what it is, how this all fits together. I mean, it sort of came together through a discussion here. Um, and I think for the people who weren't here, it will be very helpful to have a clear statement. So that might be the first thing the group tackles.
Especially for Brendan who's not.
Do you want to make a motion so that there is a clear statement of intent? And you can vote on it as a commission going, this is what you want to do?
Sure, I'll make a motion, a clear statement of intent. And I'd say, uh, a sketch of, um, uh, a process, a path and, and a schedule. Because I heard that come out of it as well. And, you know, an outcome. So I still move.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Roger, seconds. Motion is passed. No?
All in favor?
Oh, sorry.
Uh, everybody.
So what, for a democracy?
Everybody is raising their hands and saying, aye.
Forgot the importance. Sorry, yeah. Do we do?
You have to do, you have to.
All in favor? All in favor of the motion?
I can't hear you.
Aye.
Those against? Now, democratically now, motion passes. Thanks for the reminder, Alice, I appreciate it.
Let's go home.
Yeah, not yet.
Um, yeah, now we still have the working group updates, uh, and I'm done, we've got some key members missing, but, uh, and Alice, you're going to have to help me, uh, of the, uh.
Research?
Of the groups, the point, uh, it is getting late, the point person for, for those groups. So, yeah, I'll start with.
If you want to wait, we can do them next time unless somebody has anything that's substantial on the, um, that they wanted to bring up that they've been working on in their group.
Yeah, we, I guess speak now or hold your peace until the next session?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just say in terms of the partnerships, I think we've, um, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong here, but we've, we've sort of outlined our interests. And they were, they needed further discussion by the whole group. I think they will come up again in what was just proposed and voted on. So, so I don't think we need to say more about them now. Jeff, if you want to hold forth on what we've been talking about, please, please do.
No, nothing to add.
Okay. Okay, so Alice, we're tabling the rest of the working group updates to the next session? Do I understand that correctly?
Correct.
All right, great. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, new business and action. Uh, Alice, do we have any unfinished business?
No.
Okay. And then the new business, uh, is the support for the Hazel Dell Avenue, uh, 78th Street to Cougar Creek Water Quality Retro, uh, retrofit grant. And a motion is needed, uh, here. Uh, what do we, do we need to do, Alice?
Um, Brent, do you want to talk about the project briefly? And then, um, is what it uses, they, they need, they would like to have a letter of support from the commission?
So, um, this is just an opportunity for the, um, ecologies, integrated, um, water quality improvement grants. Um, we've identified a project that's in the six-year capital plan. It's the Northeast Hazel Dell Avenues, um, uh, project. It's, uh, runs from 78th Street to Cougar Creek. And the, the project is to replace and upgrade, uh, catch basins, the better water quality treatment infrastructure. Um, it's about, estimated to be about an $810,000 project. And we're hoping to ask ecology for, uh, 75% of that. Grant opportunity has a 25% match. Um, so we did, uh, receive council approval this week to apply for this grant. Um, but we would like a letter of support from the commission as well. Um, if you need more details, I'll have to get you in touch with Jeff Knobal.
Okay.
I included, um, the information in the packet, the, an overview of that Subash put together, so.
Uh, is it packet?
In here.
Yes, right, yeah.
Yeah, the last page, talked a little bit about it.
So would Brendan write that letter of support?
Um, I have drafted a letter.
And he would, we, he would sign it on our behalf?
Yes.
If, if the motion passed?
Very, if, if he passed it, I can read the letter to you if you would like.
Does that, does, uh, the group want to read the letter or see the letter here?
Well, I think as long as we know the intent. In fact, I'll make a motion that we forward a letter in support of this particular project.
Okay, thank, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Jeff, uh, seconds, uh, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Those against? None. Uh, motion passes to, uh, for a letter of support for the Hazel Dell Avenue project.
And I can send, and I'll, um, get that off to Brendan for his signature.
Okay. All righty. And, uh, last item is miscellaneous updates, Alice.
And I'll make it short and sweet, just like me. Um, reminder, annual reports, um, be taking pictures. Uh, Jeff's been really great about giving me his, uh, community engagement activities. Uh, and some of the things that he's going to negate. I really appreciate that, any of the educational, um, developments, if you have any, please let me know. Um, it definitely helps in starting to draft that, um, report. Um, and we'll do group and individual pictures at November meeting since we're running late. Um.
I won't be here for a meeting just as a reminder, but not that I have to be in the picture.
Well, then I'll take a picture for you as I'm leaving.
Photoshop me out somehow, yeah.
Um, Jeff Snobal's going to give a short summary about the six-year capital infrastructure plan, uh, the next meeting, um, for that. Um, next meeting, we'll also be electing a chair and a vice chair. So please be thinking if you would, you would like to serve. And, um, I also, uh, right now, Michelle, Marie and Matt's terms expire. Uh, Matt has indicated he will be seeking to renew for another term and I would like.
But he hasn't put in a letter yet, so.
Yeah. Well, you, you've said that you've indicated you will be seeking, so.
I say a lot of things, but.
I know.
Thank you for, thank you.
Anyway, I do want to give a heartfelt thanks, it's early, but Michelle and Gertsen, Marie Lamanna have, thank you so much for your leadership and your keen insight over the years. It has been so very much appreciated and it's definitely greatly helped shape this board into what it is today. Truly, it is, even in the four years I've been here, um, they both were very instrumental in helping me, um, be a part of the board and, um, helping assist you and, and the things that they put, put in place. Um, in fact, you talk about training, there wasn't training until Marie and Michelle were the ones that advocated for developing some training. So, um, and we're definitely improving that. So I definitely do appreciate the willingness, thank you very much. Um, and we'll talk more about that at the next one. Um, and if anybody would like to volunteer, um, I do need some help or we need some help, Brent and myself. And one or two other, um, commissioners we like to have on the selection, um, process and selection committee. Typically, it's the chair and, and/or vice chair. This year, the vice chair may potentially be reapplying, so he may, shouldn't probably sit in on the, uh, on the interview panel. So, and I don't know yet with Brendan how much, uh, availability he'll have. So if you could, um, let me know, we'll try to hit the ground running and I'd like to try to actually get things scheduled and have dates set up for interviews and, and going over applications. Um, so that we'll actually be on an even tighter timeline this year. They are not having a council meeting in December. So in order to get this to council, we need to get it to the county manager around Thanksgiving, ideally before Thanksgiving. So the week of Thanksgiving or that Monday after, that Monday of Thanksgiving. So it's going to be a tight turnaround. So anybody, it won't be too onerous, it'll be hopefully one night, maybe another night of interviews. And then, um, potentially some time during, um, one or one, maybe two meetings to review and go over the rubric, um, which I will definitely be updating and, and, and reaching out for better ideas on that. So, um, if anybody is interested, let me know. Um, and we can go from there, but, and if there's anybody that is interested in talking, um, reaching out to those various organizations or any other organizations, um, to help get more out there. Um, and that is actually all I have left because we've talked about everything else, about having, um, more goals and projects and, um, moving forward.
Okay. Great, well, then it sounds like the agenda is completed in its entirety, uh, session adjourned. Thank you.
Stay adjourned.
Thank you all.
All right, yeah.
Good to see you all. Bye-bye.